Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 22, 2022 Public Board Meeting of the Nishamani School District. Ms. Burns, if I have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in executive session this evening, prior to this evening, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real
No announcements.
Announcements. You will now turn to Dr. McGee for our superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A brief report on things we're thankful for, and that's the Nishamani community, our staff, and our students. Yesterday, I was able to attend the first annual Alumni Achievement Awards sponsored by the Nishamani Education Foundation. I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder here. And that is a group that sole purpose is to support Nishamani of volunteers, and normally it's financial support, but they've moved on to supporting us in a bigger and better way, and they've begun to honor our graduates for their accomplishments. So I'll end there in case Mr. Kovitz has more for later on. Continuing on that theme, over the course of my travels in the last two days, I've been able to see what amounts to over 300 baskets, and they're not baskets, they're big boxes of food, leave our 10 buildings to go to families. In addition to that, over 5,000 pounds of additional food was donated to local organizations, for lack of a better word. So if you see, you see food coming into the building in little bags with little kids. You also see parents dropping off frozen turkeys, vouchers, pallets of cornbread being delivered, and then being distributed. So it really is an amazing effort, and one of the things that I'm thankful for, so Nishamani Pride is alive and well in our community, and I've witnessed it every day, not only this week, but every day, but especially this week. Mr. Allen, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This time, I'd like to move to our first round of public comment, as we have signups, but they are for non-agenda items, so I'd like to open the podium up to anyone who wishes to address an agenda item first. Seeing none, Ms. Burns, who do we have first?
Ron Baker.
Mr. Baker, approach the podium. We have a be mindful three-minute time limit, please.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I don't know if my comment or question is really out of line with this group or not.
Your name and place of residence.
My name is Ron Baker. I live in Langhorne, 744 Ross Drive. We have a 15-year-old girl student in Nishamani High. She is a sophomore. And my question or comment is about the math teaching in this district. In eighth grade and ninth grade, she took algebra and geometry, and now she's in algebra too. And my concern is that it doesn't seem to be moving at the rate that I would expect for her to be prepared for such things as calculus. I just wonder how decisions are made as to what textbook to use, and exactly how the process has gone through to decide how these subjects are taught at this level. I'm not sure if I'm addressing the right group or not for this kind of a question.
You're addressing the right group. We just can't answer you in this forum. We'll have an answer for you, though, later.
Okay. Just my concern is that our students and other students aren't getting the preparation they need to go forward in math. That's really my comment. And I may be, my comment may be misplaced because I took my math classes many years ago, and so things may have changed. It may be okay, but it just seems it's a little slow and a little bit redundant. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll address that later. If you want to hang around till at the end of the meeting, we'll have board comment, and superintendent will come back around with a response for you. Thank you.
Steve Perattano?
How are we doing? It's been a while.
Mindful of the three-minute.
Nice to see you. The 15-minute time limit? Yes, of course. Hello, everyone. My name's Steve Perattano. I live in the Buck Ridge Farm section of Feasterville. I just want to take a few moments to review a major accomplishment that this board acted on last meeting. After much turmoil and a very difficult atmosphere, the Board was able to turn the Maple Point Project into a reality. This apparently went unnoticed by most in our community. There was no public comment on the matter during the meeting, nor afterwards did I see any social media or even news reports. It's pretty amazing for a vote to codify a $51 million project. Just makes me wonder how we should all interpret that. So when I think about my years on the Board, I wonder if there's one of two ways. It's one, does nobody care anymore about, you know, what goes on in this district? Or, two, my preference, you know, over the last decade or so, the community's become a little bit more comfortable with the dedication afforded them by their local representatives. For the sake of this discussion, I think we should go with that. It's been a long time, you know, this district embarked, moving us from a 1950s model to the 21st century. We upset a lot of people, and I'm sure not everybody's happy with, you know, what the district is moving forward with. But since 2014, the Board started putting in the motion to concepts, concepts and the necessity to facilitate such. And I think, by all means, I think the district has moved in the right direction, and I think you're all responsible for part of that. Many other school districts in Bucks County, you know, have seen similar need to evolve as we have evolved, but I don't think any district has taken on the amount of projects, the size of projects, and completed them with Nishamani does, has done. And I think a lot of that doesn't have to do to just experience and dedication, but also the expertise that Board members bring with them. You look around, and the quality, people that we have serving on the Board, and the expertise that you bring from, we have teachers on the Board, we have security people on the Board, we have food management people on the Board, we have a 30-year facilities technician specializing in HVAC and energy conditions, we have a banker, we have CPA, we have a health expert, we have a civil engineer. I mean, all these things that brought so much expertise to these projects, and I really think they credit them for, for, you know, succeeding in an environment that was extremely difficult to bring this project to a reality. So while we recognize that, I believe the Board should also now recognize the fact that you need to establish an identity for this school. When we started this project, Maple Point Elementary was a project name. May turn out to be a perfectly fine name for the school.
Ms. Perattano, your time.
15 seconds, I'll be done. So as you move forward, I think you should more immediately endorse a conversation with the community and the Facilities Committee, move to either codifying this name or picking a new name. Some of the names that were bounced around at the time were Langhorne Elementary, Nishamani Elementary. I would like us to see us tie ourselves deeper to our roots. I believe a name like Lenapeed Elementary would be great and appropriate to the school. Not only that, it would give you an opportunity to really infuse some of that heritage and culture into the system. So as you move forward, I think it would be proactive for the Board to do that and allow the community to center around it and start preparing. September 24 is right around the corner, and before you know it, we're going to be having a ceremony to open this great accomplishment that you've been able to bring to us. So thank you very much.
And only a minute and 10 seconds over. Thank you. So I'll now close this first period of public comment, and that brings us to, back to our agenda. Item number two, Routine Matters. I would like to make a master motion for 2.01, The Minutes, 2.02, Treasurers Report, 2.03, The Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.04, Budget Transfers, 2.05, Our Investments, and 2.06, Exonerations. I made the motion. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. We're back to nine, zero. That brings me to Agenda Item Three, Personnel Administrative. 3.01, Appointments Resolved That the Nishamani Board of School Directors Hereby Approves The Following Appointments of Administrative Staff. There is one name on that list. I've made a motion. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. Brings us to four. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Personnel Certificated. 4.01, Retirements, Resignations, and End of Assignments. I'd like to make a master motion to approve Items 4.01, Retirements, Resignations, and End of Assignments, and under this category, I'd like to note that Teresa Lehrer is retiring with 33 years of service. Item 4.02, Appointments. 4.03, Tenure Awards. 4.04, Revised Leaves of Absence. 4.05, Contract Awards. 4.06, Leaves of Absence. 4.07, Co-Curricular Appointments.
There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero.
Mr. Allen, if I could interrupt momentarily, something I really would like to see continue, but one of our contract award recipients chose to join us tonight, Megan Becock, and I believe that's her father next to us, a music teacher that we just gave a contract to, joined us this evening to hear her contract award. Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
That brings us to Agenda Item Five, Personnel Support. Ms. Hollenbeck, please.
I'd like to make a master motion for Personnel Support. 5.01, Retirement, Resignations, and End of Assignments. I'd like to make special note of Belinda...
Helikeis.
Helikeis, thank you. I knew I was going to get that wrong, who is retiring after 22 years, and Kathleen Mininger, who is retiring after 23.3 years of service. Thank you. 5.02 is Appointments. 5.03 is Leaves of Absence. 5.04 is Revised Leaves of Absence. 5.05 is Ancillary Appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. There is a motion on the floor. Does it have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. Brings us to Business Operations, 6.01. Ms. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 6.01, Reaffirmation of Staff Funded by Federal Programs. Resolved that Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby reaffirm the following: Previously appointed, certified, and support personnel are funded with federal or state grant allocations. And there's the list is included.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second. Mr. Kovitz.
I'll give it to Mr. Kovitz. Seconded by Mr. Kovitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. That brings us to 6.02. Ms. Hollenbeck, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 6.02, Act 57 of 2022. Whereas Act 57 of 2022 amending the local tax collection law was signed by Governor Wolf on July 11, 2022, and takes effect on October 10, 2022. This grant waivers to taxpayers for penalties, interest, fees, and delinquent collection costs if the taxpayer did not receive their real estate bill within the first 12 months of purchasing their property under certain conditions effective as of the 2023 tax year. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached resolution to implement Act 57 of 2022.
All right. Motion has been made. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. Can I ask our legal to elucidate on that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr.--
Explain it in English.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Allen. It's, Act 57 is a state requirement, has to be adopted by January 1. Basically, it states that the school district is required to authorize the tax collectors for every municipality within it to waive penalty and interest if three things happen. One, the taxpayer signs an attestation that they didn't receive a tax bill, they pay the face amount upfront when they make that attestation or sworn statement, and then they produce a deed at the same time. And it's only for the first year of the ownership of the property, so it's not a thing that goes on in perpetuity.
Thank you. Board have any conversation or discussion questions on that? Hearing none, I move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. 6.03, Ms. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 6.03, Head Start, Pre-K, and Early Learning Center Programs, MOU, and with BCIU. Whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks IU desire to share information such as assessment results, health records, IEPs, or other information to help teachers meet the individual needs and individual student needs, and whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks IU desire to establish channels of communication between the LEA staff and Head Start, Pre-K providers, and local early childhood center staff, and whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks IU desire to coordinate with Head Start, Pre-K providers, or early childhood centers, the LEA will participate in parent meetings to support program improvement, parent engagement, and transition-related activities into LEA school environment. And whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks IU desire to provide professional development opportunities as appropriate, including transition-related trainings with Head Start, Pre-K providers, and early childhood education staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approve the attached Head Start Partners. And that is listed as Nishamani 2223 HS MOUs.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. A motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, I move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. That brings us to Agenda Item Seven, Policy. Mr. Cirillo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. 7.01, Second Reading of Policy. Whereas the first reading of Policy Series 100 and Policy 709 was completed at the November 9, 2022 Public Work Session with Board Action Items, and whereas the following Board Policies are being recommended by the Policy Committee for a second reading and final adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the policies noted below for final adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual, and they are section numbers 111, 117, 119, 121, 122, 123, 123.1, 140.1, 144, and 709.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. A motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, call to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. Brings us to the close of our meeting this evening, 8.01. Is there any other Board business to be discussed from anyone on the Board? Hearing none, I will bring us back to our second round of public comment. Does anyone wish to approach the podium? Please state your name, your place of residence, and remember, three-minute time limit, please, which I've lost my timer.
My name is Mary Jane Osmensky.
One second, please. Sorry.
My name is Mary Jane Osmensky. I actually live in Centennial School District. I've worked for Nishamani as a paraprofessional/IA for five years. I say slash paraprofessional because in my classroom, which is a multiple disabilities classroom, I take care of my kids' functional needs, personal needs, and educational needs. Some of the DIAs in this district are some of the hardest-working men and women I know. When I got hired by Nishamani five years ago, I got told I was joining a family. Unfortunately, with the way we're, what, how we're being, what we're being paid right now is making us go out and get second jobs, which is taking us away from our families. So our families are suffering because we're moving away from them. And my, the only thing I'm asking for one, I have one question for the Board. We are one of the lowest-paid districts in this area for instructional assistance. I know what my home district pays their assistants. I work for Centennial. I mean, I live in Centennial. I know they had two raises last year in Centennial, and all their IAs went full-time. My question of the Board, and I would only ask one person to give me an answer. I know you all won't give me an answer. Why does the Board think we don't deserve a livable wage that's going to keep us home with our families? Because there's a lot of IAs that are single parents and can't do this and do it on the salary that we're making. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I miss being on this side of the podium. I forgot how much fun it was back in those days. Thank you. I want to just shift some focus here for the Board on completing the plan that started the district on the path that you realized last meeting. The roadmap for Nishamani's facilities future. The original plan had three phases. Giza operations in Phase One to Sandberg, Switzer, Hoover. Phase Two was bequesting Fertabar, built Tuwanka. Then there was an optional Phase Three for Miller. The Board was able to realize that through the savings that we generated on the Tuwanka project. Now, unfortunately, with this Maple Point Project, we won't be so lucky, but still, the Board has managed to carry through on a ton of projects since the roadmap was announced back in 2014. With being able to codify Maple Point last meeting, you've left one part of that vision undone, and that's the Levittown section of this committee. Now, there's only one sitting member on this Board that's been here since the original discussions around the roadmap started. Through time, other Board members came on, people were brought up to speed, and people bought in. As you, those who might want to remember, when we started the roadmap project, nobody bought in. Okay? So now we've come to this point where you've been able to do this. You've been able to see our way through, to keep that commitment. Nobody knows who's going to be on this Board next year, let alone six years from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now. Administrators come and go. During, you know, my tenure, I remember having the roadmap discussion with four different superintendents. So I asked you, the Board members, to not forget Levittown, to try and bring the roadmap to its final conclusion by completing that project. If you were to realize similar timelines and events that we've done since '14, 2028 seems about the right time that you'll be able to make that facilitation, to start those discussions moving forward. Of course, that's just conjecture on my part, you know, timing, conditions, you know, will dictate when that does it, but the Board needs to make sure that that conversation continues, that you are able to encourage other Board members that this, while never written in stone, you know, I kind of called it like a gentleman's agreement, that we all said that, you know, conditions bearing, we will go around this district and make sure every region benefits from a new elementary school. So I just ask you, all the newer members, the more tenured members, to keep that in mind, and when opportunity presents itself, seize and jump on it. Maple Point Project was started in the middle of a global pandemic. Of course, the economy shifted the other way, but we still found a way to bring it off. So I think you all, as I said earlier, deserves a lot of credit for sticking it out, and as you move on, convey that message to not only new administration, but new Board members that this should be done. Thank you all. Have a very happy Thanksgiving with your families, and it was great seeing everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perattano. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close our second round of public comment, and we now come back to our Board Comment Response. Dr. McGee, we'll start with you, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Last time we had some of our paraprofessionals come to the podium and speak, I felt remiss in not commenting, so I will comment on behalf of the Board as to not comment. We, the Board is both obligated in purpose and by law to negotiate with only the representatives who represent you. So that process is ongoing. It'd be inappropriate for the Board or I to comment on anything like that. That's just how it is. So that process is ongoing. It will continue to go. So I just want to leave that out there. That's why they will not comment to you, and that's why I didn't comment last time, but I felt like I should say something. So that's, that essentially is the process. There are two entities, and they get to decide what it is, and any individual dealings or discussion would be inappropriate at multiple levels. To our math question, after this meeting, I know a little bit about math. I did it for 20 years in a district, and the guy two to your right runs the secondary program, so we will talk to you individually about your individual child circumstances. But that said, the process of math hasn't changed in a long time, and what we've done is we've advanced it. So when we went to school, I'll put us all in the same category. You took algebra in ninth grade, then you moved on from there. Now we teach algebra as early as sixth and seventh grade, geometry, seventh and eighth grade, et cetera. So there are students that, in their middle schools, taking geometry like I think-- So there are students that, in their middle schools, taking geometry, like I think you said, your child did. They're actually children who we buffed to the high school from middle schools to go to the high school to take high school math classes. So once we do the pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, and then algebra two-piece, there's a lot of options and choices that may not be available to us back in the day. So there's pre-calculus and the calculus, that's, that's a traditional path. But now we have AP courses, AP Calc AB, and then AP Calc BC, both your first and second year college calculus courses available at Nishamani High School. In addition, there's a statistics course and an AP statistics course. So after we clear Algebra Two, the options spread out, but we like to get the foundation in there. So the size of Nishamani High School allows, size not, but the, the options, the size of the options allow us to schedule multiple math courses at the same time as well. Now, all this is after the fact, we're in the middle of whatever year we're in. So what I can say is that we have, we individualize based on parent and student needs. So all we ask is that you hear why our professionals think this is the course, and then you, as a parent, get to decide. So we will have that individual discussion right after this meeting's over, if you can stick around. Okay? Alright. Here, you're welcome. Mr. Allen, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Open it up to the rest of the board now. Ms. Bowman.
So we're not supposed to comment, but I'm going to comment. I just wanted to let the IAs know that the past few meetings that we have heard you, I am a teacher, I rely on two instructional aids, one for emotional support and one for a child that has multiple disabilities in my classroom. I understand the difficulty of your job, the dedication, and I just wanted to let you know that we hear you, we appreciate you. But unfortunately, while we are under contract negotiations, we cannot engage in that specific conversation with you. But I just felt kind of bad that you guys have been here for the last few meetings, and I didn't want you to think that we were just blowing you off and not listening to you, like we do hear you. But unfortunately, we're not allowed to get into the specifics of anything during contact, contract negotiations. Also, and then I just wanted to wish the district a happy, safe, and healthy holiday, Thanksgiving, enjoy your loved ones, and please be safe when you're putting your turkeys in the fryers. I'd like a nice Q holiday and no fire calls. So just be careful and be safe.
Yeah, in the, in the spirit of the holiday, I just wanted to say how thankful I am for all the people that contribute to this district. So I'm grateful for all the, the volunteers that make up the Nishamani Education Foundation. Sadly, I couldn't attend yesterday, but from what I understand, it was wonderful, and I, I was able to experience all the, the planning that went into it. And yes, it was our first real foray into something that, that went beyond just a monetary investment in the community, but a recognition investment in the community. And it was, it was great to hear about the, the alumni that, that were the, the shining stars in the, in the highlight of, and the guest of honor at the event last night, so. And to all the people that just, that brought that together. And of course, we appreciate the administration, we appreciate, I appreciate my fellow board members, the teachers, the staff, the, the IAs, of course, just all, all the folks that make this community what it is. And just to end it with, I just want, to double what Ms. Bowman said, I just wish everybody a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving, be safe, and, and it's always good to be thankful for what you have. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else? Sorry? Ms. Hollenback, please.
I just wanted to echo Ms. Bowman and Mr. Kovitz's words. I hope everybody enjoys their, hopefully you get a little bit of a long weekend, whether you want to eat turkey and veg and watch football, or go master shopping and doing all of that fun stuff. I hope everybody enjoys their holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to just run back a little bit to last week at the Maple Point Veterans Day Ceremony. Was it last Thursday? I think it was last week, yeah. Last Thursday, I believe, toward two weeks. Well, that went fast. Okay. But we didn't have a meeting since then, I certainly recall. I just wanted to, again, I say this about a lot of our events, but it really is one of my favorite events to, to, there is nothing that I enjoy more than kind of sneaking in the back and wander around the reception and listen into the conversations that the students are having with our veterans as they come in. And you can just see the, the, the room lights up with the, the veterans are more than glad to share their stories, and the kids just eat it up. And, and I'm just so proud that we have such an event. I, I was, actually, as we were walking our way to the flag picture ceremony, Congressman Fitzpatrick and I wound up, you know, in the scrum, and he was commenting on, you know, he said, I just really wish other districts had something similar like this. This is a fantastic event for our veterans. And I couldn't help but think, you know, with pride, yet again, Nishamani points the way. And I just, not only Veterans Day, that day, all the other events that happened throughout the district, you know, all the schools to recognize our veterans, we should do that every week, every day, every month. So I'm just thrilled to, to see it continue, and live this year was fantastic. Brings me to all the food collections that I've been seeing on social media, all, all the baskets that are put together for distribution through those that need it this time of year. Again, warms my heart. That's what, to me, that's what this district is about. We educate students, we negotiate contracts, we have relationships within our buildings. But to me, it's the soul of the community that, that, and it's by these events that defined it. And I, I just couldn't be prouder to be part of that community. Even as a Catholic school kid going to Catholic school, Nishamani was still kind of the, the glue that held us all together, even those of us that went elsewhere in the community. We grew up in these neighborhoods, and I just, I can't stress that enough, how, how important that is to me, that we're a team, a sense of community, even when we disagree on things. At, at the end, we are all part of a common Nishamani family, and I think that's, that's fantastic. And at this time of year, Thanksgiving coming up, I am grateful for that. And with that, I call, I will point out our upcoming meetings. We have a board reorg meeting, you won't be seeing this until the fifth of December. Then after that, we have a facility and planning committee on the fourteenth, where we continue other plans, discussing where we're at with our high school fields project and elementary school and such. And that will be here in this boardroom, six thirty on the fourteenth. I call a motion to adjourn the meeting. Seconded by Ms. Hollenback, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone. Thanks for coming. Good night.